Everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jeff Kane from C3 Church to lead us in our invocation.
Let's bow our heads. Father God, I thank you so much, Father, for this opportunity, God, and that you've provided city council members and a mayor that look to you for wisdom, for guidance, before making decisions. And so, Father, in all your faithfulness, God, we pray right now that you would provide that wisdom, that you provide that light to show them the path that they should take. And, God, we thank you so much for their service. God, we pray that you bless it, and God bless their homes, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting for Milton City Council for Monday, August 6, 2012, to all. The city clerk, please call, roll, and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the August 6, 2012, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comments card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Burke Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Want to welcome you all to the city of Milton. We appreciate you being here tonight. And last, the city clerk, to call our first item.
Our first item this evening is approval of meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 12, 181.
Okay. Are there any items to be considered? I know we need to add an executive session to discuss pending litigation and land acquisition. Are there any other items that need to be added?
That's all, sir. That's all we have tonight.
Counsel? Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve the meeting agenda as prepared by SPAM.
I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous? Okay. Next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. The city clerk, please sound the items.
Our first item tonight is approval of the July 9, 2012 work session minutes, Agenda Item Number 12, 182. Next, approval of the July 16, 2012, regular council minutes, Agenda Item Number 12, 183. Approval of a survey agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia, and On-Site Civil Group, LLC, for a boundary and topographic survey for the following four parcels. 1-5260 Hopewell Park Road, PIN 22, 50400535029, Parcel 1. 1-5165 Hopewell Road, PIN 22, 48800534020, Parcel 2A. No address, PIN 22, 50400535034, Parcel 2B. And 1-5315 Thompson Road, PIN 22, 50400535017, Parcel 2C, adjacent to Bell Park on Hopewell Road. This is Agenda Item Number 12, 184. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia, and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., for geotechnical testing and special inspections related to the development of the public safety facility. This is Agenda Item Number 12, 185. Our fifth consent agenda item is approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Strickland Pipeline and Construction, Inc., for a stormwater repair on Thompson Road, Agenda Item Number 12, 186. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Southern Actuarial Services Company, Inc., for defined benefit pension plan review, Agenda Item Number 12, 187. Our seventh and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a contract renewal between the city of Milton and AT&amp;T for broadband services. This is Agenda Item Number 12, 188.
Okay. You have a motion, a second, and then you can consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we accept the items on the consent agenda.
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, and a second by Councilmember Large. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. We'll move on to reports and presentations. If the city clerk will please sound the first item.
Our first item this evening is a proclamation recognizing American Taekwondo Association World Champion Cameron Comrie. This is being presented by Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
I'm very excited tonight. I don't know how many of you have been staying up late watching the Olympics. I know I have, as they've been going on, and it's been great. And we've had a lot of state champions that we've done proclamations for within the city of Milton, which has been fantastic. But I think it was important to notice we had someone that was a champion on the national level as well, that also brought recognition to us, the city of Milton. And definitely deserving acknowledgement is Cameron Comrie, who just won the, is a world champion for Taekwondo. So I'm going to read this proclamation for her and then have her come up and join us. So whereas Milton's four-year-old Cameron Comrie began her martial arts career in March 2005 at Karate Atlanta, an American Taekwondo Association School of the Year in 2012, and studied hard for seven years to learn Songum Taekwondo, and whereas in that time, Comrie has risen to the rank of third-degree black belt, and whereas, Comrie routinely competes in national, states, and local tournaments in order to gain ranking among other practitioners of Taekwondo, a dedication that saw her take fourth place in traditional forms in the American Taekwondo Association, ATA World Championships last year, and whereas, in 2011 and 2012, Comrie gained state titles in forms, sparring, and weapons, and went into the World Championships ranked top 10 in the world in the categories, and whereas, due to her tournament wins, Comrie came into the World Championships ranked first in the world among traditional forms for 12 two-14-year-olds with second and third-degree black belts, one of the most competitive divisions, and whereas, Comrie took the World Championship title after a flawless routine that showcased her mastery of the Songum 82-move form. And whereas, through her hard work, Comrie has shown tremendous focus, discipline, and confidence in her abilities, and whereas, Comrie is a champion not only in the gym, but in the classroom, in the community, and in life. We are proud she is from Milton, Georgia. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, hereby dedicate Monday, August 6, 2012, as American Taekwondo Association World Champion Cameron Comrie Day in the city of Milton, Georgia, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this sixth day of August 2012. All right. So let's, uh...
You want to come up?
Yep. You come join us up here before I...
Congratulations.
Amen.
So they know that we're going... I'm going to count to three. Give three shots and make sure I get every size of... Okay. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I'm just going to...
All right. Well, the city clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item is discussion of the fiscal impact model for the city of Milton. This is being presented by Mr. Jeff Dorfman.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. All right. So you now have up on your monitors or the screens, mostly I'll talk just briefly. There isn't that much to the presentation, but you've had me working for a number of months now doing what we call a cost-of-service study for the city of Milton to basically reorganize the city budget to track what sort of land uses revenues are coming from and what sort of land uses your service expenditures are going to, and then to build a fiscal impact model so that when new development proposals come before you, now in the packet of information you get from your planning staff, they'll also be able to tell you what the impact of that project will be on the city budget. And then finally, we did a simulation of growth over the next 20 or 30 years for the city of Milton to determine if the city was going to be fiscally sustainable. So the first results that you see here are just the results of the cost-of-service study. And what these show is that, on average, Milton gets $1.05 in revenue for every $1 you spend providing services to residential land use. So that's good. So you're just a little above break even on your residential land use. Then you're getting $1.36 for every $1 you spend providing services to businesses, and then you're losing money on farm and forest land. Now, it's important to remember that some of that farm and forest land has residential houses associated with it. So, you know, you'd kind of have to squish those together a little bit. That's very common for sort of suburban areas. In rural areas, local governments tend to make money on undeveloped farmland, but in suburban areas, you tend to lose money on farmland due to no fault of the people who own the farmland, but because of development nearby, something happens and catches a field on fire or something, and that sort of causes you to lose money on it. In terms of, those are averages, what you see there, that's the average over all the residential in the city of Milton or over all the businesses. In terms of new projects, what we determined was that the city of Milton breaks even on residential development at a value of about $365,000. So if you're getting new homes being built above that level, then they are paying for themselves and not burdening current residents. Okay? Does that make sense? Any questions on that part?
Any questions?
Yeah, three... Pardon me.
Sure.
365 would be that be the market value as opposed to the assessed value?
No, that would be the assessed value. Hopefully, those are the same.
Mm-hmm.
I know I give mine every year, and I hope kind of it's not recently. I'm thinking, please, I hope my house is worth more than that. But theoretically, they're the same. But yeah, that's the assessed value, because that's basically, we're saying, how much does have to be assessed for to bring in enough property tax to combine with all the other revenue you're getting from those homeowners to pay for the cost of services they're getting?
Could you flip back to the slide right before this?
Yep.
Okay. So obviously, there's a lot of different classifications of residential, commercial, and I guess farm, forest, you're just talking about AG1 land. I mean, because this doesn't look like it's detailed enough, I guess is a good way of putting it.
Yes.
Now, if you're going to follow up with some additional facts, I'll just let it go.
Okay.
You can just get there.
But you're exactly right. To, so the fiscal impact model that the city now has can do multifamily residential, single-family residential, regular retail, upscale retail, restaurants, smaller office space, larger office buildings, hotels, equestrian centers, industrial, if you happen to get any, all those different sorts of developments that you're talking about. It accounts for the location within the city of Milton. It accounts for the density of development. So you'll get different answers for a house on a two-acre lot compared to a house on a half-an-acre lot. You'll get a different answer if it's in Crab Apple or Deerfield or wherever it is. So you're exactly right, lots of different things. We took that model with all those categories, and we ran these two growth scenarios through it. So you see a less aggressive scenario and a more aggressive scenario. The less aggressive scenario having less multifamily, fewer homes on smaller lots, more of the homes being on the larger lots. Also, the less aggressive scenario has about a million square feet less commercial development. Okay? These scenarios were built in conjunction with your planning staff and roughly match up to things that they had already run as part of their long-range planning and the updating you're doing of a number of your development ordinances. So these are in keeping with work that was already being done, so they're consistent. The results of this, now, this is sort of a mess, this table, but there isn't really a good way to show it to you. So sometimes I tell my students when they're giving presentations, it's okay to show a slide with too many numbers for people to read, just to show them there were lots of numbers. So the point here is, there's lots of numbers. So what happened here? We took those two scenarios, and we assumed that the growth happened over the next 20 years, but then ran the model out for 30 years. Why would we do that? Well, the year new projects are built, you get a bunch of permit revenue. To truly confirm that the city of Milton would be fiscally sustainable, we wanted to make sure you would be okay once that permit revenue was gone. So the last 10 years, there was no new growth, no permit revenue. Okay? And this is those, this is all that stuff added together. So through the fiscal impact model, we ran the multifamily development. We ran the single-family development, both those things in different parts of the city, at different price levels. Some of the homes were $300,000, some were $400,000, some were $500,000, some were up to $750,000 houses. We did, we spread the retail and the restaurants and the office space and the hotels around the city. So all, the model was run for all these different development projects. Everything was added together and put in this one great big table that's too small for you to see. The key, I'm sorry, yes?
Yeah, just one question as you go on with that. These numbers are all in today's dollars, not necessarily adjusted for inflation?
These numbers are in today's dollars. They are adjusted for inflation. So let me tell you what we assumed. We assumed that the cost of providing government services would go up at 3% a year, that the property values, or your tax digest, well, not the tax digest, the tax digest will be going up because all this new development's going on, but that each property's assessed value would go up at 2% per year, and that your other fees and charges for services would go up at 2.5% a year. Okay? So that's pretty conservative, because we have your cost of doing business going up faster than your revenue streams.
Okay.
Okay? So, great question. Thank you for making sure I mentioned that. Putting that all together, what basically happens is, at the end of the day, with the city fairly built out, your budget is actually $6 million better off under these growth scenarios than it is now. So the new revenue has more than paid, this development has brought in new revenue that more than pays for its services. Considering that the planning staff felt that my assessed values for the homes were on the low side, and the assumptions that I just discussed on inflation were also probably conservative, I think you could be fairly confident that the city of Milton is fiscally sustainable under a development scenario that's essentially consistent with what you have on your maps today. Okay? Other questions?
So as part of your analysis, did you do any trade-off scenarios between giving up commercial property for residential property or things of that nature?
Okay. So let me give you kind of a rough answer to that. On average, you will make about $100 a year on a house. You will, on a retail store, say, an average 5,000-square-foot retail store, you'll make somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000 a year. So that gives you some idea of what that trade-off is. On a small office about that same size, you're probably going to make roughly, and again, I'm just using round numbers, about $2,000 a year. So, and actually, the big winner here is a hotel. A 100-room hotel, medium-priced, $100 a night average room price, can bring in around $100,000 a year, more in revenue than it's going to cost you to provide services. I believe you currently have one hotel.
That is true.
So I would encourage you to increase that if you can. You know, just add three or four more. You don't have to, you know, you don't need 50, just a couple more hotels. So if you could, instead of houses, build hotels, that'd be great. Houses versus retail, you know, or other commercial, you're a little better off, not a huge difference, but not insignificant.
Okay. So if I could summarize real quick, the scenarios that you ran and the results that you see are based on a couple of different scenarios, but principally on the comprehensive land use plan that the city has in place today.
Yes.
Correct?
And it's important to understand that the fiscal impact model that was used for all this now resides with your staff. So anytime you have a question, like you just did, if you want to say, on this plot, what's the difference between five or 10 houses versus an office building, they can give you an answer.
Okay. So part of the services you provided included the model that they can now use and make use of.
Yep.
That's great to know. Thank you.
So we could look at whether or not we are better off with a hotel or a multifamily?
Definitely. Yes.
Our staff can do that on their own from now on.
Yes. We spent some time this afternoon going through the model, how they would update it in future years. The goal of this is, you paid me once, and then I'm unemployed, that your staff can take it from this point forward.
That's not a sustainable model, though.
Well, we have a lot of local governments in the state of Georgia. If I work for each one just once, I'm okay.
So in an element where markets fluctuate and housing values have had some of that turbulence as well, if at one point, if we monitored and tracked this number that we're talking about here, 365, at what point should we be concerned as a city if we see those values dropping below a certain number? Where should we sound the alarm?
Yeah. So, great question. So what you do is, you watch the average value of new home-building proposals, which you get, I mean, on their permit application, they have to list that. So planning is tracking that, and they can compare that to that break-even value. And I'm sure if asked to give reports every six months or something on how those compare, they could do that.
And if those numbers get below 360, we should sound the alarm, or what do you...
You know, I mean, I think, you know, if that number dropped to $300, I'm sorry, $300,000, for example, so that's an average, remember, you'd be losing like $30 on each of those houses.
Gosh.
So assuming that the budget's reasonable and you're also adding some commercial at the same time, probably wouldn't be a big problem. You might not be super happy about it, but it wouldn't be a big problem.
Right. Lance?
Oh. Talk about residential in general. How does multifamily rental as opposed to condo compare to, I mean, you got that dollar five graph, you talked about that being residential.
Right.
I think you're factoring in multifamily into single-family.
So the dollar five is an average across the city of Milton. So it does include the amount of multifamily that you currently have. That's averaging with the rest. In the fiscal impact model where the multifamily is separated...
Right.
What the model shows is that you lose money on multifamily development, probably about $1,000 per apartment unit.
How about if it were condo?
You would probably lose a little bit less. That different, and that difference would increase over time, right? So the first year, there'd be, if there is same value per unit, very little difference the first year. My understanding from past experience and research is, on average, over longer periods of time, assessed values hold up better on condo units than rental units.
Right. Okay.
So do you have anything that breaks down residential between multifamily residential and single-family residential?
Yes. The fiscal impact model that you now own does that.
It will do that for us. Okay.
Yeah.
Is that a real high level? Let's sort of get away from, you know, what's multifamily this, or single-family, or whatever. Is there a sort of a figure that we should be shooting for in terms of just the ratio of commercial property in the city to residential property and undeveloped property in order to not ever have to worry about digging into the numbers and trying to figure out exactly how things wash out?
Yeah. Great question. I always refuse to answer that one, because I don't live in the city of Milton. So what I usually tell people is, you know, what the right balance is between residential and commercial is a local question, and if you tell me what that mix is, then I'll tell you how high your taxes will be. But the answer in Milton's actually a little different. Since you're making money on the average new residential and the average commercial, you should be okay, whatever the mix you get is. So I don't think you have nearly the incentive, a lot of governments do, to keep their growth balance. Usually, I'm really pounding on county commissioners or city council members to not just approve residential and to make sure they get in more commercial. But here in Milton, because you have such a high average assessed value for your residential, you're under much less pressure than most places to make sure you balance the residential and commercial.
As long as the residential has a high value.
Yes.
Another question. Good.
Doctor, you mentioned the revenue from an average 5,000-square-foot commercial was around $1,500 per year. Is that a composite of all types of commercial, or did you analyze, say, cigar store versus a grocery store or a jewelry store? Are there different...
Okay. So there are differences. That was sort of a composite. That was an average sales per square foot sort of retail store. For example, supermarkets have a little higher service cost. Your public safety employees tend to have to respond more to a supermarket than to a jewelry store. Within the fiscal impact model, we adjusted for that somewhat. We have sort of regular retail versus upscale retail, and we have the ability to change the value per square foot of the retail building to whatever it happens to be, so you can adjust it a little. We also built in a feature for big-box stores, so that you can cost big-box stores differently. You make much less money on a big-box store than you do on an equivalent square feet of smaller retail stores, because your police are just going to respond to the big-box store much, much more. Basically, you know, the general feeling is, if you get a Walmart, you can just put two officers there 24 hours a day. And that costs money. So it accounts for it a little bit, but you're exactly right, that $1,500 is kind of an average.
Lance? Now, there's only... Is that a composite of all types of commercial, or did you analyze, say, cigar store versus a grocery store or a jewelry store? Are there different?
Okay, so there are differences. That was sort of a composite. That was an average sales-per-square-foot sort of retail store. For example, supermarkets have a little higher service cost. Your public safety employees tend to have to respond more to a supermarket than to a jewelry store. Within the fiscal impact model, we adjusted for that somewhat. We have sort of regular retail versus upscale retail, and we have the ability to change the value per square foot of the retail building to whatever it happens to be, so you can adjust it a little. We also built in a feature for big-box stores so that you can cost big-box stores differently. You make much less money on a big-box store than you do on an equivalent square feet of smaller retail stores because your police are just going to respond to the big-box store much, much more. Basically, you know, the general feeling is, if you get a Walmart, you can just put two officers there 24 hours a day. And that costs money. So it accounts for it a little bit, but you're exactly right, that $1,500 is kind of an average.
Lance?
No, this only takes into account the services that we provide because there's a lot of other services that we get from, still from Fulton County, water and sewer, services, schools, all that. And so this only takes into account the public safety, fire, police.
That's exactly right. In fact, one of the funny things we were talking about today is normally, I go around, if any of you take my class in managing growth at a GMA convention, I'll spend a lot of time talking about how density is good and density will lower your service costs. Why? Because of all that infrastructure, the roads, the water, the sewer, the utilities, it's much more efficient. You don't have any of those problems. Fulton County has those problems. So one of the reasons that you lose money on multifamily is that all the savings in infrastructure don't accrue to the city of Milton. Fulton County would probably love you to build more multifamily housing because they would probably make money on those. If they're one- and two-bedroom units that won't have many kids, the Fulton County schools would love you to approve them because there won't be many kids and they'll make money on those. Similarly, if you approve a $400,000 house that has two kids that go to public school, you will make money and Fulton County schools will lose money on that house. So yes, this is what happens to Milton's budget. There's three budgets going on here, three totally different effects, and no way for you guys to pass the money around in between, you know, among yourselves to even it out.
So if we were providing those services, this model would look totally different?
It would look totally different.
Of course, revenue would be different as well.
Yeah. Yeah, for example, I've done one of these for city of Covington. Covington has their own water, sewer, electricity, and gas. Very different picture.
For our knowledge and our education, how does, there's been a lot of cities in the news lately that have had financial difficulties. I'm sure you've heard about that. Have you watched to see what has happened to those cities in particular?
Yes.
And seen, in your estimation, just so we know what's happened, so obviously that we stay far and above away from that, but in your mind, where do those cities get into trouble?
Okay. Great question. So they've done one of two things wrong. There's one group of cities or counties that are in trouble that borrowed too much. So they took on debt, often for revenue projects even, but backed them with their, they were GO bonds. Okay? So if you back the bond, even if it's supposed to be paid for by that parking project or the water treatment plant or whatever, if it doesn't make enough money, you're on the hook. So that's why Birmingham's in the trouble they're in, and that's what happens to some of the cities in California and Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. And then the second group is a group that was relying on the permit revenue. They were doing okay because they were approving projects that in the long run they lost money on every year, but in year one or year two, when they collected the permit revenue, they were making money. So as long as there was new growth, it hid the fact that the growth they were getting wouldn't really pay for itself in the long run. Now that we've had five years of no growth, they're in big trouble. So that's why, for example, we ran the simulation out for 10 years after we stopped the growth to make sure you weren't reliant on the permit revenue. And one thing I should mention that you need to be careful of, and I'm not a lawyer, so I can't give you legal advice, and now the attorney's all nervous, because obviously when somebody says that, they're clearly about to give legal advice. The Georgia Planning Act makes it illegal to turn down a proposed development project simply on the basis of a negative fiscal impact. The law says it is one factor among a set of factors that you, as a council, are allowed to consider in making your decisions. So you can't suddenly start turning down every project that would have a negative fiscal impact on the budget. You are entitled to say, "Well, this would have a negative fiscal impact on the budget, but it's workforce housing. We want some of our teachers and police and firefighters to be able to live in the city of Milton, so we're going to approve it." And you're allowed to say, "Well, considering other things we've approved recently, we can't afford this one right now," and turn it down. So you always just want to be careful that you take fiscal impact along with all the other factors you currently consider in deciding what's best for the community. Okay, and the attorney can relax now.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to our staff putting some real-life examples in this.
Thank you very much. City clerk, please call the next item in the first presentation.
Our next item is RZ 1211, to amend Article 16 signs as it relates to moving signs and replacing the current name Crab Apple Crossroads Overlay District Signs to Crab Apple Form-Based Code Overlay District Signs, Agenda Item Number 12189. Next, RZ 1212, to amend Section 642371 to create permit expiration standards for land disturbing activities, Agenda Item Number 12190. Our final first presentation item this evening is HD 1201, approval of an ordinance for historic designation of the property located at 12560 Hopewell Road, The Hardiman Store, Agenda Item Number 12191. Joint public hearing was held July 16th on this item.
Okay, I have a motion to second on our first presentation item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the reading of the first presentation of the three items listed.
I'll second it.
Do I have a motion by Councilmember Loska, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. There's no items in the public hearing in zoned agenda or unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. City clerk, please sound the first item, new business.
Our first item is approval of a resolution to approve the submission of a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to Purchase an NFPA Compliant Cleaning and Maintenance System for Firefighters' Protective Clothing. This is Agenda Item Number 12192. Mr. Matt Marietta.
Good evening. Just for reference, NFPA stands for the National Fire Protection Association. It's the umbrella organization that gives us our fire planning codes and also has a lot of guidelines that set up how a fire department should be run, so many firefighters per types of apparatus and response times and the various standards that we operate under. So these next two items are predicated on the understanding that we've got a new facility that we're building, and we're trying to think out every possible permutation of which direction we can go in this facility. And as the grants come open, are looking to apply for those, so when the facility opens, we are able to try to defray some of the cost of building the new fire station. This first item is for basically a washer and a dryer, except it's a washer and a dryer that's specifically created to extract the carcinogens and the, they say methyl ethyl, bad stuff all the time in the fire training academy. Basically, the chemical compounds that we get on our clothes from being inside a structure fire that you're not technically supposed to take home and put in the washing machine with your kid's clothes, or even two or three cycles of laundry before your kid's clothes go in because then they get contaminated and carry that on with them. So there's a specific method for washing and drying this clothing, not only that it protects the integrity of the safety of the firefighters by separating it out from the normal laundry, but also protects the integrity of the turnout gear so we can extend its usable life as long as possible. So this grant specifically is requesting funds to purchase those items for the new fire station, which we've costed at about $18,100. It carries a 10% match, so the city would have to come up with $1,800 approximately to match it, depending on exactly what item we purchase under the RFE process once that's, if it's funded. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Bill?
Matt, you keep talking about the wastewater that comes off of this washing machine. How is that water treated? You talk about carcinogens and heavy metals and everything else.
Honestly, I can't give you the specific process. I know that the NFPA regulations take all of that into account, and in implementing a program like this, we're going to look to protect the public as much as possible, if you're talking about it running back into the system, to meet all the applicable codes and regulations as far as that's concerned as well.
Chief Edgar, did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, I'll just offer some assistance to Matt. There's a filtration system within the washer and dryer that captures all of that, and then we change those filters out on the maintenance schedule. So none of those contaminants go into the normal drainage or sewer systems.
Okay. And the size of this equipment, was that contemplated in the plans that were drawn up?
It was, it was. And it's no larger than maybe one of your larger standard washers, like a big Maytag. It's simply about the same size as that.
Any other questions?
When I was reading, doing my homework on this, I was trying to picture what we're doing now, currently as well, and how it's different than what we're asking for. Obviously, we're sending it somewhere else to have this stuff done, right? And that process is.
There is a third-party organization that does our maintenance, and that would be if we get a tear in it or if there's another issue, and they also provide a cleaning service as part of it. So if we get one that gets exceptionally bad, then we do send it out to a third party. There's also surrounding jurisdictions that do have these, that we can take our equipment to their locations, to their fire stations, and clean it there as well. But ultimately, that's something we need to be doing in-house. It's kind of like taking your laundry to your neighbor's house. Eventually, they're going to want you to buy your own washer, so.
Yeah, Lance, go ahead. So you're going to house this equipment at the new public safety building, so the other fire stations will bring theirs like we have to your house?
Yes. None of our current facilities have this equipment.
So we'll use that facility there to clean all the?
Yes.
Gear.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 12192.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Longoria. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. City clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item is approval of an application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant Program. This is Agenda Item Number 12193. Mr. Matt Marietta.
Again, in anticipation and looking at the different possible ways we could deploy personnel in this station, back in 2007, when we first formed, we applied for what's known as a safer grant. And at that time, it was a five-year grant cycle, we're in the fifth and final year of the grant cycle, funding the salaries of three of our firefighters that helped us put our ladder truck on the road. The grant program has changed in the last couple of years to where it funds 100, in the 2007, the reason it's a five-year cycle is the salary amount was gradually stepped down, and the city gradually bore a greater amount of the burden. The grant cycle right now is written, so it provides 100% funding for the salaries for a two-year period, anticipating recovery. And the majority of this grant funding is allocated for firefighters preventing layoffs and furloughs and so on. But 25, I believe it's 25 or 15%, has been earmarked specifically for hiring of new firefighters in situations, one thing they mentioned, where the population has significantly changed. And the last 10 years has seen a significant change in population in the city of Milton as you look at the 2000 estimate and the 2010 actuals. So this looks at one possibility for this fire station of staffing it with nine firefighters, and I've requested all nine in this amount, and it's a 100% amount for those salaries, which totals up to about $950,000 for that two-year period. There's no obligation to retain the firefighters after that two-year period, unlike the current grant program. If you'll look in the agenda memo, if y'all read that, I took the numbers and I carried it out over five years. That's just to give you all an idea of what it would look like if we hired those firefighters and then retained them for all five years, or didn't come up with a different way to situate our staffing. Again, this doesn't, approving this grant tonight doesn't necessarily obligate the city to accept that grant if it's awarded or even head in that direction. We're just trying to open up our possibilities as the grant opportunities come available. And this one, the 2007 I applied for about the same time, and it was June of the following year that it actually came through, so this one would be right in line kind of with our whole process of the construction of the new station. So we thought this was a good time to apply for this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about this as well.
Okay. Matt?
Are we planning on moving our ladder truck out of Alpharetta Station to that? Or will this be a new facility? I mean, I know it'll be a new facility.
Yeah, there's no plan to move the truck out of Station 1 because that is a critical component of our automatic aid agreement with Alpharetta.
Okay, gotcha.
So these are options that we're looking at, and I don't think there's been a plan developed yet on what's going to be done, but we wanted to take advantage of the grant opportunity because it doesn't come true until, as Matt said, in June. And we can always turn it down.
Sure.
You know, if we are fortunate enough to be funded for that, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Obviously, applying for the grant implies that we'd be hiring a couple more firefighters from that standpoint. But just out of curiosity, I think I mentioned it during our council retreat as well, you know, what is the possibility of having some kind of volunteer program for our fire department as well? If we, I mean, I don't know what the other council members think about it, it's just a thought. I just would like to know, you know, if we're having a need for more firefighters, we'd like to have good quality people as well, but also citizen involvement isn't a bad idea in my mind. I just want to know where we stand on that.
We haven't done anything with that, and we really haven't explored a volunteer program. We have looked at the possibility of part-time firefighters to fill vacancies when we have them. If we were enabled to staff a unit, then we could utilize a part-timer who's actually employed by another department. Many departments in our region do that.
Okay, any other questions? And I'll open up the floor for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve an application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant Program, Agenda Item Number 12-193.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. City clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item is approval of a resolution authorizing Mayor Joe Lockwood to negotiate in good faith regarding the city's local option sales tax position with other mayors of municipalities located in Fulton County and with officials and representatives of Fulton County, Georgia. This is Agenda Item Number 12194. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this resolution actually emanates from lost negotiations that have already forthcoming. As you know, lost is the local option sales tax. It has to be renegotiated this year based upon the decennial census, and those negotiations have begun. The city manager has been attending those meetings, of course, with the mayor, and they're just getting off and running, but I believe the consensus was, rather than have all of the council members from all of the various jurisdictions trying to come down for a handful of reasons, it makes a lot more sense to at least informally, or in this case, formally, designate the mayor to at least be able to negotiate for the city of Milton at these meetings. This resolution accomplishes that. This resolution is very clear about two things. Number one, there'll be no binding of the city council with respect to the lost split until such time as ratification by the full council, and this is not intended to create a committee of the New Open Meetings Act such that it would be subject to, for sort of a committee of one, if you will, that would be subject to having to require or comply with all the with all the meeting requirements before attending these lost negotiations. This is basically intended to give just the mayor the sort of the horsepower, if you will, to go out and say, you know, "I have the support of my council to be here and to negotiate on behalf of the city." That's it.
Any questions? I'd just like to add, it's been very interesting. There's eight different criteria, one of which is...only one of which is population, but which is in the best interest of the city of Milton. But to have 14 different cities and all mixing all the criteria, and what's good for some and not for others, it's gotten fairly complex. But just the city manager, Chris, and staff, and Ken, and myself are certainly out there looking to negotiate the best deal for Milton, so Milton's interest there. Questions?
Sure. How long is our deadline for the negotiations to be wrapped up? And if once they are, is the money distribution, does it go retroactive back?
That's a good question. Let me address the first part first. With respect to the deadline, the lost negotiation process actually follows a fairly structured negotiation process. There's 60 days of what we call informal negotiation, followed by if they're unsuccessful, then a 60-day period of formal dispute resolution, which could be mediated or otherwise. And if at the end of that second 60-day period, there's still no agreement, then either a party that was a party to the negotiations can then file an action in the Superior Court for what's called baseball arbitration, at which point all sides will tender their best recommendation of what they believe a lost split should be, and the court can hold a hearing, or the court can simply just select one. So, the baseball arbitration is something a little new, and that's being used this time, and all the jurisdictions are going through it based upon the census, and so we'll see how that goes. The negotiations need to be resolved by the end of the year, you have to submit your certificate of distribution to the Department of Revenue by December 30th of 2012. To the extent that there is no negotiation settlement, we end up in litigation. My expectation, Councilmember Large, is that any final resolution would be retroactive to the date that the current loss would expire, which is the end of the year.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution authorizing Mayor Joe Lockwood to negotiate in good faith regarding the city's local option sales tax position with other mayors of municipalities located in Fulton County, and with officials and representatives of Fulton County, Georgia. Agenda item number 12-194.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Lost, second by Councilmember Thurmond. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Our final item is consideration of whether to opt out of the class action lawsuit, City of Run versus Hotels.com, relating to application of hotel excise taxes. This is Agenda item number 12-195. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this next resolution is simply a housekeeping item. There has been litigation that's been going on for a long time, of which Milton has not been a participant, but of which we at least are a stakeholder. It has to do with online travel companies and the extent to which they pay hotel motel taxes related to their sales of, well, hotel rooms online. Historically, and what's got the...what resulted in the litigation was the fact that they would sell rooms, but they would pay tax based upon a wholesale rate they negotiated with the hotel, and would not pay tax based upon the retail rate at which they sold the actual room. Now, some of the municipalities that have a great deal of tourism brought suit, saying you can't do that, you needed to have paid tax based upon the actual retail rate, and that has been in litigation since '05. There has been some intermediate court rulings that now appear to suggest very strongly, in fact, do suggest as a matter of law, that they have to pay the tax based upon the retail rate. What you have in front of you now is that all the jurisdictions got basically a preliminary notice of settlement of this class action, saying, "We would like the cities to either opt in or opt out of the class, because there's about to be a distribution based upon the court rulings we have thus far, so we have a choice. We can either opt out, which means we would have to perfect our right to collect this money on our own, or we can opt in, provide the plaintiff's lawyers some information about the hotels in Milton, and then they will tender that all in, get a...come up with a dollar figure, and give us a percentage of whatever we're owed." I don't expect it's going to be a windfall for the city of Milton. On the other hand, I would request, and I think it makes good sense that we stay in the case. I don't believe we have any interest in pursuing it independently of this litigation. It just makes sense to stay in. My lawyers will make sure we work with Stacy to get the correct hotel information to the plaintiff's counsel, and at some point, I anticipate, we'll receive a check.
One question, procedurally on this. Obviously, we would approve the consideration of whether we would approve the resolution electing to not opt out. Is that how we would say that, if we were to make the motion to approve this?
The resolution itself, I think you could just approve the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it says that a very thing. We are electing not to opt out.
Okay. You've got questions? Open up the floor to a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the resolution to not opt out. Agenda item number 12-195.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Coats, second by Councilmember Thurmond. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Move on to reports. Any council report? Anybody got anything they want to report on?
Went to the living room conversations again, the second one held by the Milton Disabilities Awareness Committee, and thanks to the police that were there to give information about what the city of Milton Police Department was going through, and bringing that education to the cities. We had about 35 citizens there, much more than anybody really thought, even had some interest from other council members of other cities, thinking about coming to it, just to see how we were doing it. But I thought that was a great job, and a great job by the department to put that together.
Okay. Peter?
I just want to thank Carter and his crew for getting the Cockburn Road Bridge open on time, because I have received a lot of very positive comments about the fact that it actually opened with schedules, so...
Okay. Phil? And to add to that, blunt construction, and pretty much completing the intersection improvements at Cockburn and Bethany, too.
Yeah.
All a great effort in this short period of time. Not blunt, balder. Balder. Credit to the...got another one. Received an email from Liz Hausmann's office today regarding the bonds on the Dinsmore property, and Fulton County has agreed in principle to work with the city of Milton to salvage those barns, rather than having them demolished when construction starts up on the new library. So, we're starting a little group out here. Chris has been involved in it, as to what it's going to take to salvage those barns and possibly relocate them to somewhere else in the city. I think the group's going to meet this Thursday, I believe.
Yeah, and they're also the Friends of the Milton Library, they're also starting the group to, you know, promote the new Milton library, so I think that's going to be a great group. I know the Friends of the Alfreda Library's always been very active, so we will now have our Friends of the Milton Library before we have the library even built.
Okay. Move to...do you have any staff reports?
No.
Okay, all right. And I'd like for a motion to adjourn into executive session pending litigation and land on acquisition.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.[1165.67]
We need to change the property.
We do go back and change them, I'm not sure.
That's the city west side, I just wanted to the city west by.
This is gonna be something for the more than maybe changes. We can read it.
Move to reconvene the regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in the second that we reconvene, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, that's unanimous. Move for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
Motion in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, that's unanimous.